Are almost ready. It's live now. Mayor, it's live. I'm gonna start recording it and Matt has send the audio and video through YouTube.
Okay. We still got one minute to four o'clock.
Okay.
And any guests come online? Jorge?
Yeah, there's other folks. Yes, she wouldn't here.
Jorge, whoever's not talking should probably make sure that they go on mute.
How many videos were, um, staticky or something?
Okay, four o'clock.
What the place? Off?
Yes. Okay, uh, sure. You have, uh, Mayor, you have the floor now.
Okay, right. Okay. I'll call the meeting to order and this will be kind of a new adventure for us, folks, um, tonight. Um, so Allison, could you do a roll call, please?
We can't hear Peter.
We'll need everybody to mute their, um, where the little microphone is. You mute, you mute that and it should come up red.
Okay.
Okay, I'll try it.
All right, Sykes?
Here.
Olson?
Here.
Alex Johnson?
Here.
Bessie Johnson?
Here.
Coburn?
Looking for the.
Here.
All right. Uh, Kellum?
Here.
Anopen?
Here. Okay, all right. Why don't, so, uh, folks know that somehow on the iPad, some who, some of us who are on an iPad, we can only see six people. So like I can only see Bessie, Jorge, Mike, Bill, and, and Peter in, with Sean and Allison in the same room. So, and then we know which counselors are here. So can everybody, who else is here, can you introduce yourself?
Lynn Meyer with Community Lending Works.
Janet Steele with the Albany Area Chamber.
Anyone else?
Peter Greenberg, Citizen.
Oh, hello, Peter. Al? I think, let's see, I know Caitlin Mays, I think I heard you're here. We know Seth and Sophie, Marcia. Is that it, Jorge?
No.
Marilyn.
I have here, besides the council, we have Chuck Reno, we have Marilyn Smith, we have Caitlin May, we have Holly, we have Shane Wooden, uh, Ray, Mary Dibble, Peter Greenberg, David Martino, Hassel, Rebecca Bond, Anne Catlin, and Lisa Grado.
Okay, so you've got all of that, all those on your screen then, Jorge?
They all on the list. Some of them are on the phone, so I can't see them.
Oh, okay, but you can see everybody else by video?
Yes, everybody else.
Wow, yeah, so, okay, so we'll have to bear with us, folks, because there's only, the other five or five of us can only see six screens total, but, um, okay. Um, with that, oh, and then if everybody can, when you're not talking, if you just put your microphone off, then we don't pick up any background noise. I'll do that too, or you might want to hear my cat meow or something, so. Okay, and let's see, Seth, did you want to start off with the emergency loan fund?
Sure, Mayor, happy to do that. Um, just want to say good evening to you, Mayor, and all the counselors and everyone else in attendance. I appreciate you doing this. Um, you know, my heart and all of our hearts, I'm sure, are going out to all those who are affected by this rapidly changing COVID-19 crisis. Um, it's been very humbly on the economic development side of the things to watch this crisis unfold, uh, for our business community, and everybody is being affected in some way or another. Uh, again, from our professional stance, my peers and colleagues around the state, uh, as well as organizations who work in economic development, have really rallied in a resolute and quick way to try to address both short, medium, and long-term recovery responses, again, from the economic development lens. Um, I think what's a little challenging right now is the path forward is by no means clear, right? We don't know how long folks will continue to be affected. As federal resources become more and more available for business support, I think that the path forward will be somewhat more clear. But I'm on calls all in virtual meetings most all day, every day, uh, with, with businesses and economic development resource partners, um, who are all trying to work together to address an appropriate response for really what's an unprecedented situation. And one element of that response is why we're here together this evening, and that's to talk about a potential for standing up an emergency small business loan fund. The purpose of such a fund would be to act primarily as a bridge loan from now until other resources become available, both federal as well as state and other resources. Up until this point, it looks like many of those will come through the Small Business Administration or the SBA, that's our federal agency around small businesses. And again, their definition is 500 employees or less, so maybe a little larger than what we come sometimes think of as a small business, but at any rate. So that's one, it's to, it's to provide a, a bridge, so we can get from now until then, which is gonna take a few weeks to maybe even a few months to mobilize some of those funds. Um, and then the other element is to try to dissuade businesses from taking on potentially predatory loans, uh, as bridge loans that come at very high interest rates and may be difficult to service, even when they get up and running again. So I submitted to you on Friday, I think it went out, a package that had a staff memo, kind of describing the, the situation we're in, and a proposal for an emergency loan fund. Uh, the basic structure of such a, a fund or loan package would be, uh, first and foremost, a fairly simple application by the businesses. So, um, it would be a, a two-page or less application form that really they need to show their 2019 financials and the first few financials or months of financials up until the COVID crisis really started affecting us. Loans would be between $5,000 and $15,000. Um, that is designed to cover things like operating expenses, rents and mortgages for the business property itself. It's specifically not designed to cover business owners' personal debt obligations, like their own credit card bills, uh, home mortgages, that sort of thing. And definitely not the intent to have them use this money to settle existing accounts payable and then close their doors. The idea is try to keep businesses open as much as possible, and, um, again, not, not intended for, uh, primarily personnel costs either. There are quite a few resources that are becoming available to help keep business, uh, employees there if you're able to, to continue working. Other elements of the basic loan structure would be no payments whatsoever for the first six months after receiving the money. Then for the, from seven to 12 months, it would be interest-only payments. And then, uh, over the next four years, we'd amortize the remainder of principal and interest, uh, for the next four years. I mentioned, and you've heard before, that our, we'd be using, the proposal at least is to use Community Lending Works as the, the lending partner on this. Community Lending Works has been around in our community for quite some time, and I believe they're on the call. They can answer some questions. Uh, but I just wanted to give a brief background with them and what the reason we'd be working with them right now. They stood up as very similar fund with partnership from Lane County, cities of Eugene and Springfield about a week ago, I guess. Took them about a week to set it up, and they were able to capitalize that with all those partners to the tune of $400,000. And, uh, and again, I'll let them talk about their experience a little bit with that. It's been absolutely remarkable, um, on how quickly and resolutely the demand was made clear for, for such funds. But I just wanted to bring up Community Lending Works because one of the other elements of the loan package is that they will, on a month-to-month basis, the, the folks who have received these, this loan need to touch base with Community Lending Works to make sure that they're making progress towards their really emergency survival plan, it, what they need to submit at the time of loan application. And, uh, so that's the basic loan structure. Staff's recommending that the city use a portion of the Economic Opportunity Fund, formerly known as the Pepsi Dollars, uh, to tune out $200,000 to, to capitalize this fund. Um, and then in addition to that, uh, it would cost about $8,000, which is 4% of the total loan amount, for the administrative costs to be, uh, taken care of by Community Lending Works. So that's advertising in conjunction with us, doing the intake, underwriting, and then ongoing servicing of the loans through the lifetime of the loan. So that's really a very reasonable cost. Um, in fact, I know they're, for a fact, they're not making money on this deal, but they're invested in the community, uh, in our region to, to really help, and that's why they volunteered to do this. As I've maybe mentioned, but probably should, this is definitely a work in progress. Community Lending Works and their Lane County partners have been learning more and more each day, I think that's fair to say. And I'd actually invite, if we could, the, I, I don't know if it's Lynn, uh, or Emily who's on the phone right now, but if they'd like to just hop in and talk just a little bit about their experience with the Lane County Fund, uh, emergency fund. And then I'd be happy to answer questions and talk about more details with the council, um, if you have questions.
Thank you, Seth. This is Lynn with Community Lending Works. So if my voice sounds a little harsh, because I'm Mike Seth, I've been on a lot of calls lately, so it, uh, comes in and out. But I wanted to give clarity on two different points. One, a little bit of the application process and what that looks like. And then, two, the demand and what we saw in Lane County specifically. So to address the application, what we created was a two-page, simple application to get us the basic information on the business. As Seth said, we're asking for the 2019 financials and the 2020 financials, and then we're asking the business to develop a written emergency plan. That emergency plan really addresses non-personal expenses. Like Seth said, it's to deal with paying their business lease, their mortgages, inventory. It's, and sometimes it's a, a shelter your business plan to where we've closed the doors, we're paying the minimal expenses, but we want to have some of those capitals set aside. So when we start to see a little bit through the fog, we're able to have a little bit of capital to buy some inventory, maybe pay for some basic expenses and relaunch. And then the 2019 financials, why that's really a critical element is that we want to make sure that business was viable before the crisis happened. Because one could argue if a business was seeing a significant loss in 2019, that they were facing some cash flow crunches that needed to be addressed. In the event that they do show a loss, we want to make sure it's understandable. Maybe they had a large capital purchase at the end of the year, which created a paper loss, but when you back that out, it makes sense. So the underwriting from, for the most part, is quick, decisive, and we want to get the money in the business's hands as soon as possible. We also wanted to create it where the bar to entry was relatively low. We didn't want to create barriers. We didn't want to have weeks of review. We wanted to get immediate feedback to the business, but we wanted the accountability going forward to be fairly high, because we want to be partners and to be involved with them as they continue to shelter their business, relaunch their business, and hopefully in the future, scale back to where they were and beyond. So that is why one of the critical components is the non-payment period. But for that non-payment, they don't get to just not do anything. They're required, as a loan covenants, to touch base with either ourselves at Community Lending Works or our affiliate company, Dead Northwest, to meet with either one of the loan staff or a counselor to touch base of how the emergency plan's going, what actions have you taken, is there any trigger points that we can identify? They need technical assistance? Do they need to connect with a bookkeeper, an accountant, an attorney? So we can be there as an advocate and a partner going forward. So this being said, we came up with this concept, and in the first week, to be honest, was building the bike and writing it down the street at the same time. We engaged with the county, both City of Eugene and Springfield, to capitalize this fund. We made a press release a week ago Friday with the intent that the applications would go live on our website at noon on Sunday. At noon on Sunday, we had in the first 15 minutes over 100 applications. By the end of the day, on Sunday evening, we had approximately 200 applications, and by the next morning, we had over 250 applications. So the good news and the bad news of that, we'll start off with the good news, was it reached our target audience. There was a huge demand throughout Lane County. The bad news is that $400,000, the city and the county wanted to have loan amounts a little bit different, up to 30,000. We were only able to fund 19 businesses, but we were able to capture all of the business information, put them in a database. So we have them as we know more about what's coming down the pipe from federal, from state, and the community level for different layers of capital, because we knew that this loan, quite frankly, was not going to be a silver bullet. It was not going to solve a lot of the problems, but it was a stand in solidarity as a community to show that we can get capital in your hands to meet the ongoing crisis, because a lot of these business owners don't know what tomorrow faces, and they're, they're out of capital. They, they, they have no ability to survive. We also knew that the reality was there's going to be significant losses, and I want to be very transparent about that, that quite frankly, there could be anywhere between 15 and 30%, and then sometimes we've wondered if half of them may fail. There's no way to predict that, because we're not sure exactly how long this shelter in place and our businesses are going to be shut down. And the last thing I wanted to add in there, some of you might be curious, is what type of businesses applied out of that 250? To be honest, when we first rolled it out, I thought it was going to be food and beverage heavy, because they were the most immediately affected. And yes, we did have a decent amount of food and beverages, about 40%, but countywide, we had anything from medical offices, auto de, detailers, we had mechanic shops, dentists, uh, massage therapists, you name it. It was quite amazing, and to be honest, it was very humbling to see how the immediate economic downturn had put these businesses in a difficult position. So, Seth, that's my kind of high-level overview, but I can try to answer any more detailed questions that anybody may have.
Questions? Any questions?
I have one.
Okay, Rich, and then Bill. I see Bill has one.
Go ahead. You were talking about, there is no such thing as, uh, paying personal credit cards. Are you looking at what's on the credit card before you tell them no? Because we're, a number of small businesses use their personal credit cards to run their operation. And, you know, it may well be the rent or the light bill or the, you know, the whatever it is that goes through that personal credit card.
So, the short answer, if I can answer that, so the short answer is no, we're not looking what's on there. But we are, the, the, the businesses that are identified early on, we are engaging them with a conversation. If it's a very well-thought-out plan, and you read it, and you think, this makes sense, and they address to pay their credit cards, it could be a phone call from myself or a staff or an email to say, on the credit cards are those ones that are utilized for business expenses, because we understand that a lot of our small businesses do, um, use their personal expenses.
Okay, thank you.
That make it, if that answers your question.
Is, so this is Alex Johnson. If, if things turn around sooner than later, would the loans be called in? Or are we still going to give them the four-years period to pay it off?
We wouldn't call them, um, because we, the, the goal for our side is we know that most likely, any business coming out of this crisis is probably going to need a leveraged capital in more than one place. And we want to make sure that's affordable for them to pay over the long term. These loans do not have prepayment penalties. So in the event they get some sort of stimulus bonus, or they get a tax return or a tax credit that creates a little bit extra cash flow, they can pay that debt off and without any penalty, but we would not call those loans in asking them to come back in, because once we've made a contractual agreement, as long as they pay as agreed, they have to run the course.
Okay, thank you.
Bill? Yeah?
So it's a question for Seth, but if I heard Lynn correctly, he said that down in Eugene, they had a $30,000 limit per company. Have you thought about or determined a dollar limit for our program?
Yeah, that's a good question. Um, and so what, what, uh, what we had proposed is to do loans between $5,000 and $15,000. And I think Lynn, what he would tell you, and he can probably chime in here too, is the limit on loan amount is somewhat predicated by how much you capitalized the loan with. And so with an eye towards trying to benefit a few more businesses than say, um, $200,000 divided by 30,000 at a max loan amount, that number is quite a bit lower than say $15,000 at a maximum loan amount. And given that it is a loan, businesses are not incentivized to take more than what they need or feel like they can service. So my proposal would be, uh, between 5,000 and 15,000. But, um, again, I can't say enough about Community Lending Works as being a great partner in this. They've expressed as much flexibility as, as we want. But that's where we're at right now.
And Seth, can I add one other thing? And I realized I should have brought it up earlier. You're right, on the loan amount, the reason the loan amount is a little bit less is just from a capitalization level. So if, in the case of 400,000, we were able to do 19 businesses, and not everybody took 30,000. What we did is kind of a marker, if somebody, if we had a business that maybe had $50,000 in gross sales and they asked for $30,000, one, looking at those numbers, feel like they're, they're off, that ratio's a little out of whack. So what we kind of did is that the loan amount can be no more than 30% of your gross sales. So that kind of helped give us a little bit of a benchmark. But I wanted to talk about and circle back to what happened after we approved the loans and where do they stand today? So looking at last week, um, I worked on Sunday afternoon and evening identifying the initial batch of businesses. By early Monday morning, we had all of the initial batch, and I say a batch because you reach out to everybody, you have questions. Some of them don't qualify, some do, but by noon on Monday, we had all of the businesses identified and approved. We were able to create the loan, build the loan documents, send them out via DocuSign, and the funds started dropping in people's accounts electronically versus via ACH deposits. By Wednesday and Thursday, I think the last deposit hit Friday morning. So from Sunday at noon to Friday afternoon, we were able to take all those applications, sift through them, get the ones that were approved, and approved and funded by the end of the week. And that was absolutely from the folks we talked to. Now, we wish we could have helped more. We just only have a certain amount of capital. But it was an absolute, it wasn't that they needed the money. That second is knowing that it's coming. They could start to make plans throughout the week.
Okay, Mike?
The gentleman said that, um, they perceive 30% uh, default on the loans. And the second part of that question for somebody to answer from the city would be, do we have the $200,000? Or do we have that much money that we can basically lose when the businesses fail at a rate, I believe he said, of 30%?
I can see.
I can answer that a little bit. Oh, go ahead, Seth, go ahead.
Well, look, uh, Mike, the, the question about default rates is a thumbs up right now. This is an educated guess by them. 15 to 30%, it could be much less, depending on how quickly this is resolved, and it could be higher. So from the perspective of the municipal partners in Lane County, they actually capitalized the fund essentially as a grant, where they did not expect to receive the money back. Uh, also with the hope that as loans were repaid, it would, it would create more of a revolving loan fund down there. In our case, what we proposed is that as principal is repaid, that it gets, uh, refunded or brought back on an annual basis to the city. But I think it's definitely, um, reasonable to think that there may, there may be, uh, high default rates. It's just at what rate, we don't know right now. And so to your second part of your question about, do we have the money? That's probably a pers, a perspective question, but in the Economic Opportunity Fund, we absolutely do. There's over $2 million left in that fund. And, um, I think what I would suggest is if 200,000 seemed like a reasonable amount, uh, we can definitely start there. If you decided that it was a resounding success and wanted to leverage this further and add more to it, that's an option as well. But I think also it's good to think a little bit longer term, that as federal resources begin to trickle down, it's possible to leverage what the city may invest here, um, to expand the fund moving forward, and even be more specific about the targeted business groups that you're trying to re, reach, minority, women-owned, that kind of thing, versus just first come, first served.
While even a 15% loss on funds is kind of a steep, steep number. And then, like you said, it's a thumbs up. It could be as high as, say, 40% or 50% on a loss of revenue for us to pick, or somebody to pick winners and losers. I question that.
The reason, and if I can throw a little bit in there, um, is that we wanted to be very transparent, that these are unprecedented times, and we just don't know. I can tell you historically, our loss ratio before any challenges for the last 10 years has been less than 1%. That is definitely out the window, because there's no way that we're going to have businesses come online and maintain a single-digit loss ratio. I would be absolutely ecstatic if that were the case. We want to, when we originally developed this loan, we had the question from the county and the cities, is what do you think? And, and, and this is their thinking as well. We just wanted to be very transparent of kind of a shoulder shrug of, we don't know, but it could be significant. It could be in that 15 to 30% range, or it could be 40%. One, we just don't know. I mean, I think businesses are facing even a longer challenge as of yesterday afternoon, when social distancing was increased, uh, increased for an extra two weeks. So we know for the most part, nonessential businesses are going to be offline for another two weeks, which is a total of 30 days. And the question is how many of those, without financial assistance or with financial assistance, can weather the storm? And how quickly can some of the other identified funds trickle down to help our communities? And I, I don't want to mislead anybody, because we simply don't know. But what we do know is through our CDFI network, through conversations with the federal government, the state, and the counties, because we're on the front line of those conversations, businesses need some sort of capital in their hands immediately to try to weather the storm.
Okay, Bill?
Mike, I think you bring up a good point, and it's got to be somewhat of a balancing act, for lack of better words. You know, am I willing to lose some money if somebody defaults? Yes. Uh, I don't want to lose all of it. Rich, you had a comment, and I think it was on Hassel's blog, but it was touching on that same subject. Can you repeat, or do you remember what you wrote?
Yeah. What I said was, there, there were people who were kind of whining, that were throwing money away. And my retort to them was, this is a loan, loan. Now, it's possible that we could lose some of it, uh, but we're definitely going to lose if we lose the businesses. Now, I'm, you know, I'm kind of tight-fisted with money. Uh, I think you all know that. And we're not going to receive any of this back soon, because this would be a lower rate than any, what, anything they would be able to get almost anywhere else. But that having been said, um, I think if we, if we maintain the thought process that over the long term, we'll get the vast majority of the money back, um, this is reaching out to, um, small business. I mean, I, I don't like the idea that we pick winners and losers. It needs to be on the basis of a business that can survive. And that is incredibly important, that they have the ability. But that having been said, I think it's a good idea. And if we lose some of it, yeah, but what would we lose if we didn't? I mean, you could name some names. I mean, without, you know, I'm not going to, but you probably all know a business that's right on the edge. And especially in the, in the restaurant kind of business, they're, they're very close to the edge all the time. So, that's my, that was my thought. that's my, that was my thought.
Okay. So I've got my laptop going, so I can see everybody now, Jorge. And then some of you didn't hear, and Bessie's doing it. Put your pin up if you're gonna want to speak next, so now it's Bessie's turn.
You're muted, Bessie.
I'm muted, I'm so sorry. Can't read lips, no. Sorry if I missed this, Lynn, but the businesses that would be applying, is there a, like, a net income that they would be proving? Or can it be like any amount of business that they do that if they need just a little bit of help, that's fine? But, or is it more of the lower gross or net income businesses that would be qualified for this?
Sure, we didn't address that specifically. The first part of that is, they have to be net income positive. You can't put necessarily a minimal number because what's hard is we don't have enough metrics to run what we'd call a debt coverage ratio. Essentially is how well they're able to service their debt because their world has changed. But they needed in 2019 with a net positive income. And that 30% of gross sales was kind of our measure to make sure they didn't leverage too much. Because the key thing is, we want to make sure that business was viable prior to the downturn. That is absolutely the key part of that. And when they're developing that business emergency plan is to not only address, how do we deal with this current crisis? But how do we think for the next 30 to days to four months about potentially relaunching our business? So we are evaluating the business. Again, it's not a perfect science, it's not like the normal underwriting we do. We have, we do a lot of business lending, and the underwriting process is different because we have more metrics, we have more history, we have detailed business plans to look at. And the one thing that didn't get addressed is we are pulling credit on these loans. It's not to come up with a credit score of yea or nay. It's quite frankly, looking for two things. Is there a major red flag that we're not seeing? Was their credit already in a position that even during good times, if they needed to grow their business, would they be able to leverage additional capital? And because one could argue, you could be a 700 credit score today if you own a restaurant, and you could be a 400 in six weeks because of the way things are going to go. But it's how did they manage their finance prior to the downturn?
Okay, that helps a lot, thank you.
Okay, counsel, do you have any other questions? Dick, how about you?
No, I'm all for this, I think it's the right thing to do. We've got the money to do it, and I think we ought to read the resolution.
Okay, well, I don't, is there a resolution?
I have one more thing.
Yeah, there's no resolution?
No, I have one more question about, one more question. One of the things I've been thinking about since listening to this conversation is that there are businesses that will apply that have already received funds or grants from the city, or they have loans from the city. Are they going to be prioritized first? So we don't further extend our debt and lose money on them? Or the current money we have invested in them? So how's that going to work? I think Seth will be, are you going to be prioritizing these, or how's that going to work, Seth?
Well, so to the question of prioritizing, it's really two things. It's who comes to the table with a complete application and shows that they have the ability as best as possible to services that move forward and be successful. So we did not account specifically for, really, it's a small handful of outstanding loans that we have. I'd have to actually check on that to give you an actual number, it's very small. So that's a good point, we could consider that. I don't know if there'd be a reason to do a prioritization there, though.
Well, I didn't, that's probably not the right, correct choice of words, but I want those businesses, we've already got investments in, if they have an opportunity to continue and be a benefit to the city, I think it'd be something we should seriously consider.
There is one more part to your question, which maybe you didn't mean to ask, but as a part of this agreement, we give the underwriting and decision-making over to Community Lending Works as the lending professionals to do the risk assessment and look at the financial viability of these companies. So as, from a staff level, we'll really remove ourselves from that, just like how they've done in Lane County, that's the proposal.
All right, thank you.
Bill, and then Mike?
Is Janet still online? If so, I'd be curious, any thoughts she has?
Janet? Yeah, I'm here, can you hear me?
Yep, uh-huh.
Okay, sorry. Yeah, I, you know, none of us can guarantee which business is really going to survive and which is not. But I think we need to do everything we can to try and help businesses during this financial crisis. It's not the original grant that I was looking for, but I think you've come up with a solution that allows businesses at least the opportunity to work with the city and obtain some financial, well, the finances they need that might keep their doors open for the next 30 days, 60 days, 90 days. And I think it's very important for the city of Albany to do something to help these businesses.
Okay. All right, okay, Mike?
I agree with what Janet's saying. But my concern is, I think Seth answered, my concern is, does the city have the money? Because I'd hate to put the city in a position, I know it's only $200,000, but I'd hate to put the city in a position where it damages our ability to provide services.
That's a good point. Seth, or who wants to add?
Oh, I can let somebody else, but I would just say that the pot of money that I'm making reference to has been set aside, the remainder of it at least, informally for economic development purposes and isn't counted on for operational expenses right now, but I'll just say that.
Yeah, oh, Peter, Mike.
Oh, Peter.
I was going to say, I appreciate Counselor Sykes's comment, but with all that's happening, we're going to have much bigger problems. The exercise that department heads were going through for budget impacts in the last couple of months, those are pretty much now all overcome by events. So certainly, you know, $200,000 is nothing to be sneezed at. And we value every penny we can and put it towards city services, but we're going to have to make much bigger adjustments. And like Counselor Kellum said, the loss of those businesses would be probably even greater than the 200,000 total.
Mike?
Okay, so then, if we do have the money, and he said we've got $2 million sitting there, how did we arrive at 200,000 then? It seems to me, are we, I heard phasing it in or whatever. Why not increase the amount if we're going to do something instead of shooting at an elephant with a BB gun?
Well, Mike, I can tell you our thought behind that, and it's a great point. And there's two things really. One is, that's a miserable amount with what was stood up in Lane County for a single municipality. So it's sort of on par with what they've done. And I can say, again, for Lynn, as I've talked with them closely, they have learned so much from that initial salvo. There's nothing that prevents them from recapitalizing or adding money to that fund. I would also say that the idea of equitability of access to this fund, it should be a real concern for all of us. In the short term, it gets very complicated to start thinking about targeting specific businesses in the short term. But something you might consider is, if this seems like it's working, starting with 200,000, say, it could be added to, and you could look, we could be looking at specific subsets of businesses, traded sector only, women and minority owned only, that kind of thing, to target other sorts of businesses, or just expand the fund. There's really, there's no limitation here except for what you want to do, and then funds available.
Okay, Rich?
Yeah, I guess what I'd point out to you, Mike, is that this is a interim system until the federal government's thought process can be brought back. At least what they're talking about is considerable money. And that would be in addition to what we do, not instead of it. So, I mean, and we can always add if we want to. I don't have a problem with 200,000.
I agree with Rich, I agree with Rich on that, I think it's a good starting point.
Mike?
Well, my, the comment that I would make is, number one, we're not Lane County and Eugene, we're Albany, Oregon. I understand they only funded 400,000 and they could go up, but the starting point to me, if after hearing all of this, may be a little low. And I think that they're going to find that as soon as they open the gates, they're going to be flooded like they were down in Eugene.
Well, it's a very valid concern, and I think Portland, I think I saw on the news, they were opening up for like one, and but I mean, I agree, we, the 2 million that we have in that Economic Development Fund might be needed to just keep us afloat. We don't know what's down the pipe for us, so I'm worried about, you know, how long of a recovery it's going to take. So it's so unknown that I think it's kind of starting conservative for establishing a program at this level. We would have to think, you know, take a deep consideration whether we ever increase it if we do get that question to us. But at least this would keep it at a lower amount because you're right, the floodgates could open and we could have all this amount and question it all in one day. But we're going to have tough times ahead of us, folks. So, but this at least might be able to keep some of our local businesses afloat. And mostly with existing businesses, we know, we know what they've invested in the community already. So, so that, I mean, that kind of gives us a little bit of comfort when existing, then a new startup too is unknown. But we've got some unsettling times ahead of us, so. Okay, I haven't seen any other pins up, anybody else have questions? So, so with that, do you want staff to bring back a proposal?
No, I think we need to move forward. If we're going to move forward, we need to do it now. There's no sense in waiting. If, from what I'm hearing from everybody, the more we wait, the longer this is, I'm not for waiting at that point. We either do it or we don't.
I agree.
Yeah, I agree with Mike. Sean, I guess the issue is, from a legality standpoint, do we need a resolution or something to vote on? What kind of, I agree with Mike, I just, how do you proceed legally?
John?
There we go. You can make a motion, I would suggest making a motion tonight to authorize Peter to enter into an agreement with Community Lending Works, which is, it's an agreement between the city and the company to do what we've been talking about. And then he can sign off on that agreement, and we can go from there rather than have another meeting on this and delay anymore.
Well, I'll make the motion of Peter in an agreement with the company to finance these loans.
Second? Your second? All right, I think we'll do a roll call to make it easier for Allison then. Allison? And did you get, and you got the motion, okay? Alex made the motion and Bessie did the second?
Yes, thank you, got it. Okay, roll call then.
Who did?
I couldn't hear.
Who?
Mike.
Yay, I.
Allison?
Yes.
Can you hear Allison there?
I can't hear.
Alex Johnson?
Hi.
Bessie Johnson?
Yes.
Coburn?
Hi.
Hello?
Here, yes.
Great. Carried. All right. And anything else on that, Seth?
No, nothing else. I think the one question I would be interested to hear, Lynn, if he has an opinion on this, is if what he would see the major difference of 200 to say $300,000 at his initial starting point from their side, if there's any significant gain aside from just making more money available. I'm curious if Lynn has an opinion on that.
My initial opinion is, first of all, that's, you know, a handful of more businesses than we can help. But my caution would be, we may see another wave of help in the next four to six weeks. And what I mean by that is, what they perceive and the challenges they're facing today may be different in four to six weeks. We may have to refund the businesses that we funded. So if it's, if it were going from 200 to 600,000, I would say move forth on that. But if it's a different of a couple hundred thousand dollars, what you may want to do is hold that back because we're going to know. Because the fear is, you know, listening to this stuff all day long on the news, you're hearing the end of April, but you're also hearing the end of May. And, you know, you would hate for that first round, because the truth is, the first round you put out is going to be the most risky. The second one, hopefully, you're going to have a better sense of, are the businesses survivable? Because sometimes the best thing that they can do is just close and hunker down and pay their minimal expenses and work with their landlord to relaunch. If that makes sense.
Okay. All right.
Nothing else for you then?
Okay, that's it, all right. Okay, counsel, that we're done with that, and next would be the amending the resolution number 6873. It's a local state of emergency. And did any comments on that, Peter?
Same, it's the same resolution that you had before. The mayor has signed the renewal last Friday. If you'll recall, the first time she signed a declaration of a local state of emergency, we made it a period of two weeks with the idea that we would then revisit it and extend it. This time, since we have a fairly certain expectation that this is going to last for a while, the new resolution will talk, will declare that that state of emergency is in effect until the mayor revokes it. And that at any time. That's the big change for you.
Okay. Someone's got their mic on that's real staticky. I don't know. Nope, now it's, okay, now it's clear. Bessie?
Yeah, I just want to say that I'm glad that we're going to just extend it via length because, as everyone knows, we don't know when it's going to end. And so I think it's a good thing to just extend it like this. And so I would move to ratify the mayor's approval of Resolution Number 6874.
Okay.
My second, Seth.
Okay, all right, any discussion? Okay, all right, let's go ahead and have a roll call again then, Allison.
Thanks.
Yes.
We can't hear you, Allison, it's real staticky.
Okay, go on, we'll come back to Dick. Alex?
Alex, yes. Hi.
Bill?
I think she said Bill.
Yes.
Sorry.
Yes.
I'm reading loose notes here. Johnson?
Yes.
Kellum?
Yes.
Wilson?
Yes.
Okay, we got her, got that unanimous, and with that, we're from business from the council. So, Bessie, anything?
Well, I was going to ask the council one thing. We have a code on the books that says about RV parking in large parking lots. Now, over the weekend, I heard where there are many RVers who are unable to find places to park because the campgrounds are closed. And so I just wondered if the council would be interested in too maybe talking with the places with larger parking lots, you know, just for short amounts of time or whatever, so that people would at least have a place
Yep, she's here. Marsha? Chief?
I, I am here. I, I think we'd have to take a close look at it logistically, and, and again, how you're going to manage that. Um, we can certainly have some discussions about it, but I think we have to do a little bit of work before we just give the A-OK on it, because there are some considerations around health, uh, and regulation of it as well. But certainly, I'm willing to have the discussion.
So, so, chief, would it be a discussion you could have with the county as far as, like, Lynn County Fairgrounds? Um, that's a pretty big spot, maybe that's something the county and the city can partner on. At least, at least a discussion piece.
Yeah, I think the fairgrounds might be, have another use, uh, Chuck can speak to that potentially, but, uh, we can certainly look at, uh, other avenues that are out there that might be available, but I think the fairgrounds might be intended for another emergency use right now.
Okay. Well, and, and we're trying to get people to stay in place where they're at, so if they're at someplace now, if you put more people in a parking lot area, my, that's one reason the campground shut down, because they thought they were too close, and a parking lot would even be closer, you know, if it was a parking lot, but-
Yeah, of course, we have to balance everything against what we're trying to accomplish with the shutdown.
Mm-hmm, yeah, so, um, any, anything else?
No, I just want to say, you know, a lot of, most of these RVs are self-contained, and it just would be dry camping, they would have their own facilities, and so, uh, you know, it's not like you're going to have, uh, a lot of, I mean, they're just self-contained, and so, I just, if there's any way that we could even look into it and consider, I'd appreciate it, and that's all I have.
Okay, all right, thanks, Bessie. Mike?
I have nothing.
Okay, Bill?
No.
Nope. Dick, you're on the phone?
I'm here, and I don't have anything.
Okay, um, and then Alex?
Uh, no, I'm, I'm good, thank you.
Okay, and Rich?
Well, I guess back to Bessie's point, um, this is an emergency. If these people are coming from out of state, and they can't find a place, I mean, Walmart does this all over the nation, uh, for them to, you know, I think we ought to just, you know, the, the, the state now said you can pump your own gas. Um, it is not a standard situation, and I don't think it's any big deal if we just tell them, hey, fine, it's an emergency, go ahead and do it, uh, because it's an emergency. It's not like we're telling the people from, from industrial way who have a, you know, that they can do it. It's somebody off the, off the street, and you're not making a big deal out of it. Um, but I guess, on my own, I would, uh, point out to the police that I appreciate the, um, the sense of humor that is going on, online. I'm wondering if, if they, um, got anybody to come to, uh, pick up their cocaine, um, you know, it's, times like this is a time when a sense of humor can go a long ways.
I agree.
There are advantages to this thing, this, you know, if you're, if you have to be six feet away, that means you're also protecting yourself from the flu. It means, it means that guy that you don't like is having to stay away from your daughter. It means, it means all kinds of stuff, you know? You don't have to worry about if somebody didn't take a bath, they're not close enough, and if they're, if you can smell them from six feet away, you know, you can get the heck away. Um, we don't have business from the public where somebody is sitting here for 20 minutes talking about something from Salem. Um, if they're, you know, find, when life gives you lemons, make lemonade.
Amen.
Find a good thing to, you know, be happy about staying six feet away. That's all I have.
Okay, and, um, with me, it's just been quite a different time that we are all experiencing right now. I have had, this week was, weekend was actually more calm, the weekend before was three solid days of, um, between social media, Messenger, and texts, and emails of all broad-based concerns. And I had, from businesses to operations of businesses, to people, how they're going to pay for their utilities, and, I mean, it's just, it's very, it's very, you know, concerning times that people are in right now, so, but, um, this weekend, by having now two weekends without events, um, I got a lot of filing cleaned up. I filled up my whole recycling bin this weekend, trying to be able to clean up things I haven't had a chance to get to, so, um, but yeah, it's going to be, um, a different kind of environment that we're, we've entered, and I just hope and pray that this gets over real fast, and that's why I haven't gone out. I figured I'm going to practice what I preach and try to get people to stay indoors so we can get through this faster. So, the more everybody stays away from other people, we'll get through this faster, but... Okay, um, that's it. Peter, did you have anything?
Yes, Mayor, Counselor, just, uh, let me take the opportunity to tell you just a few things. Uh, Seth didn't get a chance to mention, but the Small Business Development Center is, uh, we had a conversation with them this morning in the chamber and a few other partners, and, uh, they're working seven days a week to help small businesses grapple with the challenges they face, including, uh, the Small Business Administration loans that will be coming as part of that $2.3 trillion package. Um, the next thing, I, I wanted you to know that Vivacity, which is, you all know Vivacity, they, they donated three gallons of hand sanitizer today that, that they had, uh, made themselves in their, on their facility. Uh, the Albany Transit System today went fearless in, in recognition of the fact that they're, uh, pulling in a much, much reduced ridership, uh, so we'll see how that, uh, what effect that has on their, on their riders, uh, coming up. And then I would ask Jorge to put up, share with you, uh, two graphs, which the chiefs sent me, uh, Chief Wooten and Chief Harndon, and I don't know if you can do that, Jorge, there you go. Uh, this one is the last several weeks of, uh, calls for the, uh, Police Department, and you can see that, uh, it's, uh, it's got, it looks like an overall downward trend, but I'd ask Marsha to talk about the kick-up in the last couple of days a little bit. Um, and then the red, the red line there you see is, is, uh, self-initiated calls, which have gone down below dispatch calls. Uh, the car collisions, and I can't tell you because it's being blocked by my camera, but, Marsha, can you tell which bar is the car collision? I think it's the orange one.
Uh, this one actually doesn't have the, the car collisions, it might have been, um, a newer one that I sent you. Um, we have seen, a question came up earlier in our call about, uh, traffic data, and so, we took a look at that and, and overall in crime, and you can see the list there, uh, to see what's happened in the last 30 days, and certainly see where we made some changes in government, uh, in mid-month. Um, uh, but we've seen the traffic collisions really drop off, which is good, which kind of corresponds with the traffic probably volumes in the city. Um, the red line you see is the, is, Peter said, the, uh, proactive activity, that's officers going out and looking for, uh, crime on their own, uh, or contacts. The blue line is the calls that would come in from the public through nine-in-one system. Uh, those dipped a little bit, but overall, our, our, most of our crime has really dropped off, but we are starting to see property crime kick back up again, so we're going to do some social messaging around that. We started the 9:00 PM routine, uh, again, uh, to try to combat some of that. Some of it has to do with our retailers getting hit by opportunists, uh, taking advantage of their low staffing, Walmart and some of our other bigger retailers, uh, as well as some carpools. So, the nice thing is, we get this updated daily, and I, uh, push out to the other directors, but you can certainly see where things started to change in the city. Uh, but for sure, traffic collisions have dropped off dramatically, uh, in the city as a whole.
And Jorge, would you scroll down to the next one? And this, you'll see, uh, Fire Department calls for response, and, uh, you can see how that's, uh, come down a little bit as well. So, that's just to answer your, a couple of your questions from earlier. And you can go back to the full screen, Jorge. Um, the last thing I wanted to do was just to, uh, recognize Jorge and his staff for putting together this meeting tonight, which, um, by all accounts, has been pretty successful. Um, April 8th is our next meeting, and, uh, we'll be doing it virtually then, as well. We, uh, we keep ironing out the bugs, uh, so that one may use a different platform if, uh, if, is, deemed to be better or advantageous for us. And of course, we'll, uh, we'll keep you apprised as that develops. And Mayor, that's all I have.
Okay, thank you, Jorge.
All of a sudden, I'm getting a lot of feedback on someone's mic, but, uh-
Matt has been, I just want to recognize, Matt has been working on the background, just, uh, pushing all this information out through YouTube, so this will be, uh, recorded and placed on Channel 28 as well.
Uh-huh, so, I have, I have a total on my laptop on that screen, it shows 25. Is that about what you have?
I have 29, because I have the, uh, people calling in as well, there's 29.
Oh, okay, yeah.
You have 29.
Yeah, okay, all right, I think that's it, folks, unless anybody has anything else. Any other staff? So, okay, with that, we're adjourned, thank you.
Thank you.
They say.